Good morning and welcome to East Braden Wyandell Township Board of Supervisors Work Session for Thursday, June 6th. Just a reminder that a device, a recording device will be used during this meeting in public comment for non-agenda items. The rules for public comment of meeting, excuse me, rules for conduct at a public meeting established by Resolution 2008, the time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Any public comment for non-agenda items?
Does it have, can it be about the agenda?
Um, why don't you hold the agenda till, till-
No, but can it be? Because I would like it to bow on agenda item that I would like to, we'll just do it. Matt Kanapeski, 425 Creek Road. If you could put this map up, I'm glad Cedarville's here.
Panoni.
Panoni.
Panoni, even better. Can you bring this up? So, most people are familiar with my property situation, but I'm actually not here for that today. I'm here for the Giant land development agenda item. And to simplify this situation, I went to Jay Fisher's Facebook page. In the past two years, he's only had one post. It's a duplicate post and it's a summarized version of his perspective of these litigations. Now, we've been out, we were without a grocery store for how many years? Eight? Seven? You know, four star, what's that?
Two.
Okay. I heard otherwise. Uh, with the decline of the, uh, you know, with the board and everything, I guess they were forced to pull back and everything. But nevertheless, I understand this is like the fourth litigation or like approach to this whole subject. And we're all aware of how my property continues to reduce in size with no explanation. My property lines are taken with no comp, uh, compensation. There's no documentation. This is how it's represented on Chesko views and it continues to minimize. My waterfront property has been stolen by somebody. An acre off the east side of my property has been stolen by somebody. And property off the southern border has taken. Now, this is a common thing with Mr. Fisher. And Mr. Fisher spaced out this statement in his Facebook quote to say, to, this is in regards to the L and R litigation. To compare this situation with the condemnation of a person's home is disingenuous at best. L and R purchased this property with full knowledge that the access way was proposed. Did you write that, Mr. Fisher?
I did.
Do you still believe that?
Yes, I do.
So if it was so apparent to L and R, why wasn't it just as apparent to Giant? And why didn't Giant purchase the land?
My understanding is that Carlino did attempt to purchase the land.
Attempt is not purchased. Like if I went, if I, you know, I had intentions on buying Amazon stock a couple of years ago, but I didn't get around to it. So I can't just walk into, you know, my financial advisor and be like, hey, I really meant to buy Amazon 10 years ago. Can you like, you know, up my portfolio? How does that work? How's it work for you, but nobody else?
I don't understand the question.
Well, L and R purchased this property with full knowledge of access way was proposed. Full knowledge. So if L and R had full knowledge of the importance of that property, why didn't Giant buy it?
You'll have to ask Carlino. I don't, I, my understanding is that they did attempt to buy it and they were unsuccessful in doing so.
Now, I understand on the third round of litigations, you recused yourself from that vote. Will you be recusing yourself from this vote?
I will not.
Why?
Cause I don't think the same circumstances apply.
What circumstances have changed?
Well, there were, there were specific circumstances, the third, on that third vote, which I articulated on the record and, um, they're not pertinent at this point in time.
You said specific. Please be specific.
I don't, I'm not gonna reiterate it. It's on the record. You've taken the time to go look at the record multiple times, so you can look at it again and-
Well, we're here to, that's public comment. You're, I'm your constituent, you're my representative.
It's also not, public comment is not an interrogation, so I've been nice enough to try to answer your questions, but I'm not gonna be interrogated. You have a public-
Put it on Facebook.
You, you have a public comment, make your public comment and then-
My public comment is Jay Fisher facilitates the wishes of developers and steals from his constituents on a regular basis. And now that he's exiting, uh, his service with this township, he just doesn't really care. Out of all the years of public service of Jay Fisher, your greatest contribution is when you leave.
Thank you. Um, any other public comment for non-agenda items? Yes, Mr. Whiteley?
Good morning. Dennis Whiteley, 1199 Horseshoe Pike. I'm also here for the Carlino cropper situation this morning. So, just a few things I wanted to bring to knowledge and with this township in a downward spiral consistently, I think it's just time to bring the attention to both the public and the board, that there needs to be a time when things need to change. Um, you know, I, I had a great uncle that passed away years ago, that he, he was a multimillionaire. He was a farmer, he owned five farms in Oxford. He would actually milk a thousand cows a day. And with that being said, you know, he had an eighth grade education and he made a lot of good decisions in life, and sure, some bad ones. But, you know, in the end, I would have loved to be able to suck the, the mind of that man and put it in my mind, so I didn't have to learn the lessons that he did through life and I could continue on. But, one of the greatest things I ever learned was actually from my son, when I sent him to Catholic school and all 12 grades and kindergarten. And one of the biggest and most influential things that that son, my son told me, taught me, and he was in third grade, he said, Dad, tomorrow Sister John said that I have to have, I'm gonna have my first Holy Communion, which is a pretty, you know, pretty big time in a Christian's life. And he said, before, Sister John said, before I go to confession tomorrow, when I lay down tonight in bed, examine your conscience and make a good confession tomorrow. That is probably the most influential thing I've ever heard in my life, other than when I asked my father-in-law to marry his daughter, okay? So, watching the way this town goes and the way that, that it consistently keeps killing itself is so detrimental to itself. I personally have been through hell in this township trying to develop a corner. And Jay, you have been instrumental in putting me through that hell, okay? I'm not just picking on you, but it's been Scott and a few others. I had a building that was built, I tried to clean the shithole town up, that it was, excuse my language, to make something better of it. And I got consistent resistance constantly. It was everything from, you've got contamination on your property, you don't have the appropriate parking. I had the appropriate parking. And then we had to fight for a year when a building was completed and I didn't take rent for a whole year while you township officials stuck the stick in my eye, all right? And fought us tooth and nail to suck more money out of it, all right? So you got bigger parks and bigger this and more of that. It's, it's, guys, at some point, you gotta quit killing the cow, or you won't get any milk, okay? So with that being said, with your vote today, it's time to examine your conscience and what's right. You got a 70-year-old business in this town, Croppers. Seventy years. You guys all have been here for that, okay? Most of yous. And now, you're gonna put a stick in his eye because you made a $7 million agreement with, with, with Pulte that you can't fulfill for your sewage. So you're gonna use cropper like Ollie North and bury him to get yourself out of debt. Why don't you fess up to it and just say, look, guys, we made a mistake. It's never, ever too late to apologize and ask for forgiveness. Never. Kyle, with your vote, if you vote today, I'm just telling you, it's better to be a hero to many than, and zero to none, or the few, okay? What's important here is we continue to, to drive our businesses into the ground and run people out. Look at your hardware store. Four of them. Four hardware stores can't make it in 30 years, all right? So now you have one shopping center. And if I was John Cropper, if I was L and M, if you guys voted for this today, I would immediately go back and I would go to my office and I would cancel everybody's leases. I would say, we're closing the shopping center. If you're gonna put me out of business by bringing Giant in, we're closing the shopping center. If I'm gonna lose everything I worked for, three generations of people, I would close that place, I would chain the entrances off and I'd watch grass grow. And then you guess what? You got your great big grocery store and you got nothing else. You got a gas station that doesn't even sell hoagies anymore, and you got a couple pharmacies and a beer distributor. This place will be known as Tombstone instead of Guthrie'sville. So, take into consideration, good growth. And don't be so concerned with the selfishness that this township has had for years. And at some point, you guys have to make a decision on when that page is gonna turn. I spoke about it, I'm done talking about it, but everybody knows the truth and it's time to fess up to it. Forgiveness can be forgiven. If you ask for forgiveness, there's a million people that will forgive you if you do better for your township. But this crap of constantly suing, and I understand that, you know, the town, that L and M has now, you know, subpoenaed you guys or whatever for, to sue the township for your decisions, it's a downward spiral. It's like a marriage when people get divorced, the lawyers win and everybody else loses. And that's what's been happening in this township. The lawyers keep winning and everybody else loses. So with that being said, I'm going back to work because I have very busy business and I'm proud to have worked so hard. But the last thing I'd like to see is another businessman taken down for the greed of this township. So you guys do what you want, but I can tell you, it's, it's not good. So I rest my case. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment on non-agenda items?
Um, I do wanna comment briefly. Beth, uh, and Steve from Joe Burns Beverage, uh, reached out to me last night and they were asking questions about, um, the township paying for their legal bills and engineering for up to $4,000. So, I haven't heard anything about it and I just wanted to see who approved that.
So, if the township were, if they were not willing to negotiate with the township for the sale of their land, for Pulte to be able to complete the road improvements that their PennDOT permit requires, the township would be authorized, I'm not suggesting you're going to, but the township would be authorized to exercise eminent domain to acquire the right-of-way. Under the eminent domain code, the party whose land is being condemned is entitled by law to up to $4,000 reimbursement for appraisal fees, engineering fees, surveying fees, and legal fees. So what I had suggested is, is that they, this isn't something they're asking for, so I suggested that if we can start the dialogue with them again and they feel that they need legal counsel, which Ms. Dunn is representing them, and they need their own engineer to guide them through understanding how the taking of right-of-way would affect their property, that they should hire their own separate engineer, and then I thought it, given that the law would give them the $4,000 or entitled them to the $4,000, I said, they should be using those resources and the township should be willing to pay for those fees, because that shouldn't be something that's out of their pocket. They're not asking for this additional right-of-way to be, to be used for the road. So, that was, I was involved in conversations with that, um, to suggest that we restart that conversation and offer to them that they're entitled to those reimbursements.
But who authorized township spending $4,000? You, or is that, I mean, I would think that would be something that would come up before-
No, we had, well, we have an, we have had conversations at a public meeting on trying to advise the board about where things stand with the road improvements. It affects NV Homes, who's here before you for conditional use approval, because PennDOT has said they will not issue an HOP until the road improvements that Pulte was supposed to complete are completed. The only thing that's holding that up is getting additional right-of-way, which is the township's obligation to acquire, so-
But who authorized it? Are you saying that you authorized?
No, I'm not saying I authorized, I'm saying I suggested that it would be-
She said that-
I, I suggested that we restart the dialogue. We asked Panoni to get involved in that and to set up a meeting with the, with Beth, the property owners, Beth and Steve, and at that time to offer to them to, that if they were going to have legal counsel or engineering fees, that that's be something the township would be, you know, I think you're obligated by law to do that. You have an obligation right now-
We're not obligated to do anything, cause we're, we're not that far down the road.
Well, no, you are.
This is a very simple question. I would just like to know-
So Jason, I, I had-
You authorize the place township money to-
I wouldn't say I authorized, no, I wouldn't say I authorized. I would say I suggested that that be the course that the township take to be able to get the road improvement completed that Pulte's required to do.
She told me that the township is gonna spend $4,000 and wanted to know what meeting this is in, because she was supposed to be kept in the loop. And I said I didn't have any idea about-
Well, nobody's kept them in the loop, that's the problem. That, there was a conversation in November of 2017 and that, nobody did any follow-up from that meeting. So, again, the, the issue came forward when NV Homes is trying to go forward with their PennDOT permits. They are not going to be able to go forward and get their approvals from PennDOT unless the township makes a decision one way or the other on whether it's gonna live up to its obligations from the Pulte development. So, under the Pulte settlement agreements, Pulte was required to do for PennDOT, the HOP, a road improvement at the intersection of 322 and Hope Wall Road. As part of that, they are unable to acquire right-of-way. So the township is committed to being the party to acquire the right-of-way. Those conversations started in 2017 and just ended when the owners expressed concerns. So, again, in my job facilitating the legal analysis and in Panoni's job in trying to coordinate the engineering, we had suggested the course forward would be to restart the dialogue with the owners and remind them that they would be entitled under the law to those reimbursements. So, it has to come back to the board, obviously, to coordinate that meeting. We, we had asked, we did have a conversation. We wanted somebody on the board to come and be the representative of the board in those meetings.
Well, I haven't heard anything about this and she had reached out to me and I was surprised to hear that.
Well, it's, it's-
That we're gonna be spending $4,000 on her engineering legal without a conversation.
Well, okay, well, we did have a conversation in a meeting. Nate and Andy Heinrich came-
We had a conversation about-
We had a meeting, there was a meeting. It was two months ago, I think, we had a public meeting.
When, well, that's, and this brings me to my next point. When, why are you not copying the board?
Copying the board on what? It was a public meeting. I didn't have any emails about this topic.
Beth is gonna be forwarding me the email.
I've said it a thousand times, I don't copy the board on everything I do for the township.
But the board requested you to. We've requested you to when you were hired in 2018. We requested you to, again, I believe, three months ago, I made that clear, that I'm not being included in conversation and that, and that's an issue for-
Jason, there's, that is absolutely a, not a true statement. It is not a true statement to say that I have sent emails to the other board members that I have not copied you on.
I didn't say that.
That's exactly what you insinuated.
I said, I'm concerned that our township manager is not copying the full board or the board at all on decision-making. And I think it's a good policy, which I believe we instituted, that we would prefer to be copied on all legal and engineering issues. And I believe that was actually said right there in the minutes. Uh, I believe Kyle said that there's an issue in the past with, with miscommunication between board members and moving forward, he wants everyone to be copied. I mean, that's not so hard to hit an extra two email buttons. But now, you know, I, so basically, our solicitor pledged money from our general funds to a business owner, is essentially without any board authorization. That, to me, is a big problem.
I think that's a mischaracterization of what she said. She said that there was a discussion and, and they were discussing the different elements of what would occur in a condemnation and she included that as one of the elements. She knows that she can't make a decision on behalf of the board, but there can be negotiations with her and Nate and the property owner, and then they're gonna come back to us with a package that says, this is what's gonna happen. And, and I'm assuming that, that this would be what we commonly refer to as a friendly condemnation, so that we can have all of these elements involved in it, but it would come back as a package that would have to be approved by the board. She clearly said she didn't commit to anything.
Beth told me she had received an email from, um, her representation stating that the township will, um, take care of up to $4,000 in reimbursements for this happening.
That is definitely what she would be entitled to. And I guess I would ask the board, do you wanna go forward and try to continue the dialogue with the owners? Because if they're going-
But didn't you already do that? Did you not do that already on the app?
I've not had any, I don't know Beth and Steve. I don't have the ability to reach out to them.
And I, and I- She said she reached out, she got, she received it from her.
We, in the meeting that we had with, again, it comes back to the NV Homes. NV Homes will not be able to go forward with their development because PennDOT will not issue a permit. And that goes back to obligations that have been the township's obligations for many years. I see my job as trying to facilitate something that the township is, is sort of on the hook to complete or decide that you don't wanna complete it. That's up to you. So I'll ask the board right now.
Oh, we already said that we were not-
Are you willing as a board to have your staff, your consultants, meet with the owners and offer to them reimbursement that they would be entitled to under the law for engineering and legal fees for trying to acquire the right-of-way necessary to do the road improvements? I'm asking the board right now. Is that something that you're, that you would authorize?
I would say no. Why would we?
But here, here's, I, I-
Then we're gonna add every business owner.
Well, but let me just, uh, now that you guys brought this up, thinking about this out loud, um, we as the board have taken the stance that we would not do eminent domain and, and that it was a state's problem. However, the state has now played a poker face with us where we're left in a position where other projects will not be approved and, and, uh, other people are suffering because of the consequences of a past decision. So, if you had asked me last year, would I be in favor of negotiating on behalf of the township for this problem, I would've said no. However, right now, um, we, we certainly have to do something because it looks like we're the only hope of anybody getting anything accomplished at this point. So, that's the way that I see it now.
Yeah, and the question isn't whether you're willing to exercise eminent domain, that's not the question.
We have to discuss it though.
The question is whether or not you're willing to restart the dialogue, because before any municipality can exercise eminent domain, there has to be negotiation, good faith attempt to acquire the interest that you're trying to acquire. So, that process started, the, the way I understand it, cause I wasn't at the meeting, I wasn't your solicitor then, the property owners expressed some reservations and concerns and asked the engineer to go back to the drawing board and take into consideration their comments. That never happened. It just died. So from November 2017 till today, nothing further has gone forward.
Well, that's not, that's not true. Uh, I did have a, a meeting with, with the, with Joe Burns Beverage and we actually had a meeting in this township building with the old, with the old solicitor, just by-
After November of 2017?
Scott, do you remember when the meeting was with, I wanna say it was 2018, but, um, or, or late 2017?
It's November, I believe it was November 7th, 2017.
But, I will, I will say emphatically, once again, I'm never in favor of eminent domain and I never will be. However, under the circumstances of a friendly, meaning both parties, the grantor, the grantee are both in favor of this, and it's not a hardship for taxpayers, then clearly I'm okay with that. Other than that, I'm never okay with eminent domain.
Right, but so the question now is, are you willing to offer to the owners what they would be entitled to if you were to have to condemn it? And I'm not, again, you made it clear you don't wanna do that, but to me, it's, even in this discussion, this friendly, you know, asking them to, to grant the property to the township, they need to be intelligent about their decisions. So they need to have legal counsel and they need to have engineering assistance. And I think that that's not something that's fair to put on them, cause they didn't ask for this. So, I'm asking the board now if that's something that you're willing to offer to them.
I think, I think what we first need to do is have someone go out there with a bottle of spray paint that they've been requesting for several years now, and let's mark the line of what you, the, the right-of-way that is needed.
Well, the plans were ma, I did see a copy of the plans and I, based off of recollection from a couple of years ago, the, the biggest concern that they had had, and this was discussed at public meetings as well, was their, their driveway was getting, uh, the width of it was getting shortened and they were going to have a grassy surface where there was currently parking. And, and, um, at that time, that was a Pulte drawn plan that was submitted to them and they were not in favor of that plan. And to my recollection, Pulte kinda just stopped it there and, and, and that's where they left it. So that's how I recall it from, from a couple of years ago.
She just, she told me she wants to see with flags or spray paint of exactly what is taken, I believe it's, what is needed. I believe it's .07823 acres and then the construction use of .2 acres. Uh, she just would like to know what is necessary needed, so she can make an intelligent decision. I think we're a little bit, I think we're a little bit putting the cart before the horse with saying we're gonna reimburse her what is permitted by state law for eminent domain. I mean-
So, so is that something that we would then have, reach out to Pulte's engineers to find out, uh, what their old drawing was versus maybe if they could sit down with the Burns and, and come up with a new drawing?
Well, that's what we were trying to facilitate. But again, we thought it was fair to them to have a lawyer and an engineer present. And again, they shouldn't have to bear that expense, so, but that's a board decision. If you want them, if you don't, if you're not willing to offer to pay for their engineer and lawyer, then we'll tell them that and, and try to have the conversation.
My, my only concern with it is, um, um, obviously, things are at a standstill all across the township without getting this facilitated some way, somehow. That being said, I also feel for the Burns in, in a sense that their representation would possibly have township interest in mind versus theirs. So, so I think that they should have an opportunity to have, um, you know, maybe somebody that's, that's more in their representation status.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I don't think that we should, should be pledging reimbursements, you know, permitted by state law, just as, at this point. I mean, but it sounds, from what she told me, that it was already a done deal. And that's, um, I just wanna know who authorized it, that's-
And I think you started to say, and you didn't finish the, the statement, but it sounded to me like you said, this came in an email from her counsel, so it wasn't from Kristen that she got that.
No, but she says she was gonna reach out to get the email that her counsel received from Kristen stating this.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not hiding anything. Lindsay's sitting right here. She, we had this dialogue at the end of the NV Homes meeting. I had indicated, I knew that Ms. Dunn had represented them. I had suggested that it made sense for the property owners to have legal counsel and engineering. I'm now, I, I apologize, I didn't come, I thought that the board was in agreement that trying to acquire the right-of-way in a friendly manner was something that was, was an appropriate goal, so-
Of course it is, but, but-
So I'm now before you, board, asking if you are willing to authorize, to reimburse the, the owners, to the extent that they incur engineering and legal fees, to decide whether they're willing to grant you the right-of-way for the road improvements. That's, that's before you now.
Well, I think we're putting the cart before the horse, because if we start throwing money at a problem that's not necessarily a solvable problem, uh, I think we should find out from them first, um, what, you know, get their side of the story. I mean, again, I've tried this a couple of years ago and it didn't get very far and I understand why. I'm, um, it's a, it's a tough pill to swallow for them and, and, you know, they didn't, they didn't create this, this, this issue. But I think we should definitely, um, find out from them, uh, a, a different plan if there was something that they would rather see from what was on the original-
Who's gonna do that, Kyle?
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. Rather than starting out with engineers and, and I think it, it may be Pulte, that's what I started to say. Go ahead, Nate.
I, I think just to reboot this, I mean, I think, you know, again, it seems like there's a lot of people having different conversations. Krista and I historically weren't even involved in this project. You know, you wanna get these traffic signal improvements at that intersection, you gotta reboot this. You gotta have a meeting, you gotta have a supervisor there, you gotta have Krista there, myself or Scott, whoever, let's sit down with this property owner. Even if they don't have representation, representation at that initial meeting, understand better what their concerns are clearly, specifically. We can then take that back to Pulte or whoever, determine how to move forward. Maybe it's marking things out in the field, maybe it's tweaking something on the plan, maybe it's going to PennDOT. But I feel like, I don't even know, and Krista and I don't even know what those concerns are. We're getting them somewhat second and third hand. Let's just sit down, reboot, start fresh at that time, then make a decision. Okay, they need some assistance, engineering solicitor, something like that. Make that decision at that time. But I, I think we just need to have that meeting and understand these things.
And I don't have a problem representing the board on that, since I started that in 2017. Uh, if the board is okay with that, I think that's a great idea. And, um, unfortunately, I think it has to be sooner rather than later. Um, and I think, um, I think, I can't remember, were the Burns present, uh, for the, for the-
Ulrichs.
I'm sorry, was, right.
They were, they were at the meeting in November of 2000.
Both of them were just, okay.
Yes, they were sitting at the, where Bruce and Jim are sitting.
My understanding, again, of what I've been told of that meeting was that they were, they raised engineering concerns, they raised concerns about if they wanted to redevelop their property, how it would impact them and their access onto the road. I think it's unfair to let, have them come to a meeting and not have them have somebody I think it's unfair to let, have them come to a meeting and not have them have somebody that they feel they can ask questions to that's on their side. That's the only reason why I suggested that potentially having the township pay for their legal and, you know, engineering. If, if you aren't comfortable with that, then I apologize.
I don't have a problem.
And, and I will tell Ms. Dunn that, you know, that she's not permitted.
No, it's like, it's not like we're.
Well, I don't have a problem for the initial meeting, the township reimbursing them for the, for the sit down just to, to get the water, you know, moving so to speak, but we, obviously, we have a fiscal responsibility to be careful of taxpayers' dollars, so I don't want to open Pandora's box to saying that we're, we're here no matter what. But for the initial meeting, I think needs to happen, I have no problem, me personally, if they want to bring representation, you know, you're talking an hour or two of, of time and perhaps it would be better to meet at their location so that the engineers can show them exactly with markers where, where it would, it would be. So I guess I'll leave that up to you guys.
I just, I think it's a, I think it's a slap in my face when I request a forensic audit because I have concerns with prior bookkeeping and, and policies, you know, and I'm going to be bearing that cost out of my own pocket and here we have our solicitor pledging funds, you know, to a business owner.
Jason, I'm trying, I'm trying to accomplish something on behalf of the township. I apologize, I apologize if I didn't come back.
Go to the board first and then get permission, then you go.
Then I, I will stop from now on. I will not try to be forward-thinking and trying to get things done for the township that you're doing.
That's part of our township's problem, the forward-thinking. We put a lot of.
It's something that's been on the, on the township's obligations since this Opelcoast Development went in, how many years ago?
Which amendment? Which out of the 12 amendment, you know, amended settlement?
Their road improvements required by Pendot require that that road get widened. And you're, you're going to see other developers not be able to move forward until that happens, so.
Fortunately, the.
Is your priority the yours first or the residents, Mr. Can?
My priority is the residents, Mr. Kanapeski. There's 17,000 cars that go on Route 322 every day and there's traffic problems and the board hears about it, so trying to get it accomplished.
All right, all right, we're getting, we're getting out of order, guys. Let's stick to the, we, we need, we need to, we need to decide how we're going to handle this real quick. I, I don't want to, I don't want to kick the can on this anymore. So I'm, again, I'm okay with, with starting that initial, that initial meeting and, and the township bears the cost of the representation for the Erics. And I think that Nate brought it up, I think it's a great idea. And, and what are your guys' thoughts on that?
Kristin, I have a question. Normally, is that compensation or reimbursement part of the entire condemnation package or is that normally done in advance?
It's, if, if you did do eminent domain or even a deed in lieu of condemnation, it's something that they incur the expense upfront and then send you their paid invoices for reimbursement and under the law, you'd be obligated to reimburse them only up to the 4,000. Given that we're, you know, you're not going to exercise eminent domain, at least one supervisor has expressed that, you can do it however you'd like. You can, I, I still think it should be that they incur the expense and then send you the bill evidencing what the expense was. That would be my recommendation. But I, I don't, to answer your question, I mean, I'm not sure that they're ever going to agree to grant you the right of way. So I don't, I don't think it's fair to tie the reimbursement only if the answer that they're going to give you is yes, because they, they, they probably, I mean, they legitimately have legal issues and engineering issues that they need somebody on their side to be able to answer for them.
And I think it's foolhardy to go, to go into a meeting without them having that representation because I think we're just going to be spinning our wheels.
You've already had that meeting, I think. I think that meeting is what it's for.
So if we, but they're going to walk out of that meeting and then their representatives are not going to be up to speed on what really occurred at the meeting. And my experience is that people who don't deal with this all the time, private property owners in particular, will misinterpret what's going on. So I think it would be, you know, our benefit for them to have legal and engineering representation at that meeting if we're going to reboot this thing from the very start. So I'm in favor of doing that, of, of reimbursing them up to the statutory maximum for expenses, legal and, and engineering expenses involved in, in the condemnation, in the acquisition of that right of way.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have to think about it.
Just another thought, and I know, I was just curious on this for my own knowledge, is, is another developer able to negotiate with the Erics to facilitate this to, to?
Anyone can.
In other words, if it's holding up the process for, for A, B, and C builders, are A, B, and C builders able to go to the Erics and say, let's talk this out and help you out and do what you need to do to get this done?
I mean, I think under the Pulte settlement agreements, the township took that on as your obligation, but if now you want to shift that to a different developer, you have the right to. You can ask.
Yeah, I'm not trying to shift it, but what I'm saying is if it's not, if it's not helping three people who are in, in a holding pattern on their projects and they wanted to facilitate this faster, do they have that right?
Uh, I mean, yeah, ultimately, the land has to go to the township, it can't go to that developer, but yeah, there's no reason they couldn't.
Okay.
If they wanted to, yes.
Okay. Anybody else for non-agenda items? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the minutes of previous meetings.
Before, before we do that, Mr. Chairman, I, I wanted to suggest that we take a moment, this being the 75th anniversary of a very significant event in our history, and remember the 150,000 people who started the re-liberation of France and in particular, the 10,000 people that lost their lives today.
Let's have a moment of silence, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Minutes of previous meetings, Board of Supervisors, May 16, 2019.
Motion may be approved or submitted.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Planning Commission, May 1, 2019.
Motion may be approved or submitted.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Old Business, East Brandon Wine Planning Commission Appointment and Recommendation, Scott?
Excuse me. The Jonathan Wright is, he and his wife are expecting their second child and he asked about temporary leave of absence and it was either Tom or Kristen who said that there is no such thing, he either has to resign or stay on. He's chosen to resign and the Planning Commission has decided to move Jim Grisillo up to fill Jonathan's vacated spot. So I just wanted to inform the board of, of that. You have the email that exchanged between Jonathan and myself and Bruce Rollings.
Was, when the board appointed Mr. Grisillo, if I'm saying that right, did you appoint him as an alternate member?
Yes.
Then they need to appoint, the board, the Board of Supervisors is the body that has to appoint the member, so they would need to agree and appoint him as the full member.
I'll make a motion, we accept the resignation of Jonathan Wright from the Planning Commission and appoint James Grisillo to the Planning Commission.
I'll second. And I'm going to abstain, just since I did it in the past because Mr. Grisillo is a, is a customer of mine, so all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I was abstaining. All right, so we're, now we're going to move on to New Business, the participation in the 2020 Census New Construction Program. And Luke is not here today, so I guess Scott will take this on too.
Yes, basically what Luke is asking is that the board authorize Chairman Scribner to execute Form NC F-100 from the U.S. Census Bureau. Form indicates that the township intends to participate in the new construction program prior to the 2020 Census and it would designate Luke as the liaison to the Census Bureau, which he already is, but in this case, it's for this specific program. And basically, the reason for that is that we've still got numerous homes being constructed and we want to get a complete count because the estimate of each resident that's missed has a potential for $2,093 that would be missed in potential grant funding. So we've already participated in the, in Luca, which is the local update of census addresses And staff found 119 changes from the Census Bureau's list just from participating in, in that process. So on behalf of Luke, I respectfully ask that you authorize Chairman Scribner execute that form.
Any questions?
I have none. I'd make a motion that the township participate in the new construction program prior to the 2020 Census, that we authorize Chairman Scribner to execute Form NC F-100 and that we name Luke Revan as the liaison to the Census Bureau.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
I am going to ask the board to have a 10-minute recess in light of a email that I just received and with, with the solicitor, maybe we'll take 10 minutes and then I'll share this email with you guys. Unfortunately, my email's been clogged up, so apparently it was a pretty, pretty important email, so I just want to share this with the board real quick. Thank you, everybody. We're going to go back on the record now and go into our subdivision zoning applications, but before we do that, I did want to let everybody know that the email that I received will be made part of public record via, or part of the, part of, how, how we want to work?
Well, part of, so normally, the board's review of a land development plan is not in a hearing setting. And in this instance, BVA and LNR requested that the board conduct public hearings, so we did advertise them, we did have a court reporter here. We did not have a court reporter come for the decision part, that's not required by the law. But I think that what the board would like is that we put the email that you received that Len Blair sent only to Kyle Scribner, that that be added to what is the, the formal record so that if and when somebody files an appeal to the court, that that email exchange would be part of the, what would be transmitted. And I think that's appropriate because this is a public meeting that was advertised as such and it can supplement the record, so we will do that.
And as well, I would like it on record that there was no, no reply to this said email so that we, you know, showing fairness to all. Okay, so we'll go on to Carlino East Brandon Wine LP Preliminary Final Land Development Plan Decisions. Kristin?
So the board has in their packet something that I had drafted and I had previously circulated to the board and met with the board and provided, you provided comments and recommendations for edits. So the proposed order would approve the preliminary final land development plans. They were 34 sheets prepared by Arna Engineering dated June 27th, 2018, last revised October 16th, 2018. There were some other approvals that the board would have to grant, which you have the discretion to do under both your zoning ordinance, your subdivision ordinance, and your SADO ordinance. One of them is that you would approve the landscaping plans under Section 399-79B2. That section allows the board to modify landscaping requirements. The second is the board, under 399-105C, is able to approve the use of small car parking spaces. This, this proposed order would approve the 22 small car parking spaces that are on the western side of Retail A Building. And the board also has the authority under 399-106B1 to approve the use of porous paving and that, their plan does show areas of porous paving. Your engineer has commented upon that and given a recommendation, which you'll see further in the order as a condition. The proposed order grants the various waivers from the south subdivision land development ordinance that were requested. It grants the waivers from the storm art ordinance that were requested. It indicates that there were two sections that the applicant requested waivers from and in reviewing this, both with my, with looking at your ordinances and, and Mr. Klein, under 350-34E, we don't believe that that waiver is necessary. And also 350-54B, we don't believe, I don't believe that that waiver is necessary. And so this order basically suggests that they don't need waivers from that section. There are several conditions of approval and I can go through that if the board wants. First is that the development has to comply with all relevant terms of the zoning, the SADO, the storm art ordinance, the transportation impact fee and any other applicable regulations except if they're waived by the board through this decision. They have to comply with the outstanding comments in Mr. Klein's last review letters. They must provide evidence that they provided the final plans to the Conservation District and obtained the approval from the Conservation District. They have to satisfy Mr. Heinrich's comments in his last letters. They have to restrict deliveries to the shopping center from semi-trailers to off-peak hours between 10:00 and 6:00. They have to include that in their leases. They have to comply with Hydratera Professionals' last review letter. They have to adhere to the terms of the sewer connection and reservation agreement that they executed with the authority. And if the authority deems it's necessary, they have to enter a new agreement because that agreement predated the date of their plans. I have various conditions relating to edits that they have to make to the plans and those are in Condition Paragraph 8. They must grant a blanket easement to the township for pedestrian bicycle use by the general public of the parking lot, sidewalks and crosswalks leading from the western property line of the Waters property to the sidewalk on the connector road. There's a retaining wall that's on the plans, they have to prepare structural engineering plans for that retaining wall that have to be approved by the township engineer. They have to prepare, execute, and record an operation and maintenance agreement for the areas of the porous paving and this again, came as a recommendation from Mr. Klein. The terms of that agreement would have to be approved by the township engineer and must require applicant to perform routine maintenance of porous paving. They must execute development agreement and financial security agreement, post-financial security agreement, post-financial security in an amount determined necessary by the engineer. They have to reimburse the township for all outstanding engineering, administrative, legal, and other review fees. They must pay the fee in lieu of onsite recreational lands and that is determined based on your SADO at $500 per projected full-time or equivalent full-time employee. They must obtain highway occupancy permits to build the connector road. They must construct all roadway improvements and related improvements that were depicted on the plans and that ultimately Pendot will require through issuance of HOPs. The traffic impact fee was something that Andy Heinrich calculated based on the ITE Trip Generation Manual as well as what your fee is, and that is $1,410,031.08. It does indicate that they would be entitled to a credit against that fee for the, for the actual construction cost of the connector road. It does have a condition, however, that if they obtain any other financing through grant funds, that would pay for the cost of connector road, they would not be entitled to double dip, they would not be entitled to get a credit across that. And it does, we did change this to say that if they're eligible and are awarded the grant, they must accept the grant for that purpose. They must complete, this is something that Andy Heinrich suggested, they must complete an updated traffic count at the intersection of the connector road and Horseshoe Pike 12 months after use and occupancy is issued for the supermarket. And your traffic engineer will use that updated traffic study to determine if there's any traffic signal retiming that has to occur. They must adhere to the conditions in the MOU that have not been satisfied. They must obtain all regulatory permits that are necessary to develop the property. They must execute a storm art and management operations and maintenance agreement, that's something that typically every developer must do. They must enter a drainage improvement operations and maintenance agreement for storm art facilities that we built in Pendot roads. There's no signs that were submitted, so no signage is being approved through this order and the rest are just boilerplate. They must accept these conditions, they're binding upon their successors and assigned. So this is a draft order for your consideration.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the draft order approving the preliminary final land development plan for Carlino Giant with all of the waivers as outlined in the proposed order and the conditions as outlined in the proposed order.
Well, I just wanted to say a couple of things. As of right now, it's from, based on the hearing and based on the testimony at the hearing, I, I just think that, I don't agree with this draft order on several different, several different issues. First, I don't feel that, I believe our traffic engineer reviewed the correct plan that was in front of him during the hearing. I think that is an issue. I believe Mr. Heinrich admitted that. Second, I think that there was also, in his review letters, waivers are acceptable that were never requested, which is a little bit odd. And I just, I don't feel that it was a thorough enough review for me to say that, to feel confident enough to approve a plan for, for that reason, as well as even with our engineer. I think there is too much, I'm not an engineer, I think there's too much leeway left to discretion of the board and not necessarily the kind of review that I anticipated was, does this meet our ordinance or it doesn't? And why? And I feel that it was not thorough enough to give me that information because I'm not an engineer. I, I don't want to make a decision based off of. because I'm not an engineer. I don't want to make a decision based off of what my discretion is. I want someone who's in that profession to tell me, is it, or isn't it? Second, I think that the MOU comments in there, I think the MOU is old news. I think that I asked this question early on a year ago. How can this bind a new board member? You know, the fees are already calculated, the traffic impact fees calculated. There's, you know, this plan, you know, should be approvable to the one that was approved in 2011, August 7th, which is a Sunday, which is even more odd. Judge Griffith had ruled in his opinion that the MOU is unenforceable. And Jack Larkin, the special counsel for this project, had stated that as well, that it's unenforceable. And I know there's been talks about, well, if the township doesn't stick with this MOU, then Carlino could turn around and sue us for all of the fees and legal expenses and engineer expenses that they have incurred to date. And I just, on one breath, I understand that comment, but on the second breath, then the next sentence is, well, the township did do what we said we're going to do. You know, we, on our end, did exactly what we said we're going to do. It's the court system that was overturning the plans. So I don't see how any, anyone could sue anyone for any reason. Everyone knows that. But I don't see how that would hold any weight in court for them to come back and ask for however many millions, a million dollars or whatever that was paid. And I've read enough from the other plans. I know this is a new plan, but it really hasn't changed much besides, in Mark Kaplan's words, you know, we got rid of the bank pad. And, but it, the road is not existing today. It's a raw piece of land. It's a field. And if you have an adjacent shopping center who's going to suffer internal circulation problems and trucks won't be able to enter and exit their property, I think that's something that this road, although we did not design it, I think that it can be designed in a way to appease both projects, both centers. And I just, you know, for us to alter a plan that we approved back in '95 is counterproductive. The sewage going across the property is my, one of my biggest sticky points as far as concerns, especially with the latest lawsuit, that the declaration taking did not have any language indicating a sewer line was going to go across this property. And although there is such a thing as incidental benefit, in this case, from our manager's previous depositions and testimonies and 10 years of litigation, this was not incidental. This was a planned part of this project, a very important part, to be able to use that property as their alternative method if the land ever became available. So I have an issue with that, and I don't think that we should be a part of this. And as far as the, you know, as far as the... I just think that we need to have a little bit more review and a little bit more consideration before we go down another road. Everyone, I think, is aware there's going to be additional litigation. And if there's a way to have a better look and maybe have the right and correct plan in front of our engineers, I think that would help aid us in making a decision, or at least aid, helping myself. And same thing with the stormwater discharge right next to North Coastal Road. And I had, I had written to Jack Larkin about his opinion on the express easement that is necessary before any stormwater does commence. And he didn't really have an answer for that, and that's, to me, is concerning because he is the special counsel to this project. So that's, you know, with the latest lawsuit and not really knowing the specifics of that, I just wanted to go in a little bit more detail of why I think that I'm not going to be able to to vote yes on this plan because I don't feel that it does meet our ordinances.
Thank you. I, on the other hand, I've been here for four years now. I've sat through a lot of hearings, and I've had the opportunity to talk with our engineers and now to solicitors, as well as their representative counsel as well. I've asked the questions that I had concerns or questions regarding legality of the nature of the project. And the courts have ruled and given answers to most of those questions, no, all of those questions that I've had. So with that being said, I'm a yes, I believe...
We still need a second on the motion, just so.
I believe that, I believe that the decision entered today will have, will have concerns by many, but I can tell you, I've answered as many emails as I possibly could regarding who was in favor and who was against, and I've weighed everything in my decision. So for that, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, so now we're going to go on to East Brandywine Baptist Church Leap Preschool Conditional Use Decision.
So this is another conditional use order. I was not present for this hearing. I did not prepare this decision, but I have reviewed it. This was a conditional use hearing that was held May 2nd. The East Brandywine Baptist Church is looking to have a preschool. The property is in the Institutional Residential Zoning District. This proposed order would grant the approval. And again, there are conditions. The use of the property for preschool is in addition to the existing church use. There's a limitation on the maximum number of preschool students at any time, not exceeding 60 students between the ages of 2 and 6. The hours of operation are similar to what they testified, generally between 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday through Fridays. The applicant must obtain the relevant licenses and certifications from the Pennsylvania Office of Child Development and Early Learning. Any adults that are working there must have the required child clearances. The improvements, including interior improvements and playground improvements, have to comply with township codes. They must obtain from PennDOT, if PennDOT believes that they need an additional HOP or to amend the HOP for their entrance onto Route 322 as a result of this new use, then they have to obtain that. There's an existing prohibition of left turns from the property onto Horseshoe Pike, and that will continue. And they must continuously maintain a sign that has no left turn. The property must be, continue to be served by public sewer and public water. They have to receive confirmation from the municipal authority that there is adequate sewage capacity to handle the new use. Within two years of commencing the use, the township can review, if you want. This is written discretionary. You may review the vehicular and pedestrian traffic and circulation on the property and determine whether or not, as a result of this new use, modifications need to be made internally. The rest are the boilerplate ones, having to accept the conditions within 10 days and complying with all representations that are made at the hearing. So this proposed order is for your consideration.
I have a comment, and I apologize because normally I would have commented on this sooner. But my recollection from the hearing is that we had discussed a condition, and the applicant had agreed to a condition, that during school hours, the driveway coming from 322 would be one-way in only. And I don't see that reflected as a condition in this proposed order. And that's a, that was a big concern of mine, was traffic flow. And I know that we've had some issues. We have some other locations along 322 where we have right-in, right-out only, no left-hand turns, and it's not well-observed, and it's an enforcement issue. So that's why I was concerned about that. So I think...
So when you say, so are you saying you can only right-in? That's what you want it to be, only right-in? You can't left-in?
No, I didn't say that. What I, what I said was you can't exit onto 322 at all during school hours, which would force people to go out to Keats Glen.
The school hours being from the 7:30 to 5:30, not just when the kids are being dropped off? You want throughout the time, anytime there's children at that school?
They have different drop-offs, so it'd have to be...
Whenever the school is operating, that roadway would be, whatever the hours are, that roadway would be one-way in from 322.
Okay. Nate, do you see, I'm just asking because I'm assuming they have a PennDOT permit for that? Is that something that PennDOT would have an issue with? I mean, I think we already imposed a condition that they need to go back to PennDOT to make sure that this new use wouldn't impact...
My concern is that PennDOT wouldn't necessarily make that requirement.
Right.
We made the requirement, and they agreed to it.
And I just want to make sure that PennDOT wouldn't say, no, you can't do that.
I don't, yeah, I don't think PennDOT necessarily would comment. You know, my concern, I wasn't at the hearing, but my only concern would be when you have different scenarios for different times of the day, that ends up being more confusing than having one policy across the board.
I understand that, Nate, but I also know that there are numerous situations where there are people, municipalities that have adopted restrictions on the use of roads going into residence, residential neighborhoods because they could be used for cut-throughs. So they'll, they'll turn them into one-way or no entrance during certain hours. So that was my thinking in doing this. And it's, I don't think it's a fire safety concern because they have a perfectly legitimate exit route, which is actually preferable because it takes you out to a traffic light.
Would it be okay if I wrote the, or the decision, that condition to say that provided that PennDOT has no objections, the same? I mean, you will, you're imposing that, but ultimately, I think, is, am I right to say that PennDOT has to approve that, or no?
If, no, I don't know that, I don't know that Penn necessarily would have to. I don't know that they would opine on that.
Okay.
And I don't, I...
If you're reducing access, I don't think Penn is going to...
I want to ask them in case they say no.
I don't want to wave a red flag so that we draw attention to it.
But I mean, like Wawa's going out on the roads, they have a no-left turn from 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. So I don't think it's unheard of, and I don't think, I think people have that option of following it or not following it, but at least the deed was done where the sign was put there and it's, you know...
And then the condition should also read that they have to install appropriate signage to...
Absolutely.
Okay.
So with that amendment, I would make a motion that we approve the draft decision and order for the conditional use application of East Brandywine Baptist Church.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
So what I'll do is I'll circulate that proposed condition to make sure you're satisfied with it before I put it into the actual order and then get Mary the order for you guys to sign. Okay. And then third and final, and I'm sorry, Ms. Dunn, to have you have to sit here this whole time for this, but thank you for being here and thank you for your cooperation. I have a proposed decision and order for NVR Incorporated. They filed a conditional use under the age-qualified residential community provisions of your ordinance that you recently changed. They are proposing to have 295 residential dwelling units, which is 161 single-family detached and 134 townhomes on the Weaver Track. Their, this proposed order would approve the conditional use with, again, several conditions. The use of the property will be an age-qualified residential community as defined by the Township Code, restricted dwelling units which are occupied by at least one person 55 years of age or older. Those restrictions will be contained with the homeowners association documents. A maximum of 295 dwelling units is permitted, but this order is not specifically 100% approving the layout that they presented, although I know there's been a lot of engineering that's gone into that. So the third one is existing spring house. Shall be preserved, restored in perpetuity, and maintained as a spring house. That's going to be included in the HOA documents. There has to be mitigation of the proposed development on the spring house. And the Historical Commission will be involved in making sure that the restoration is done to their liking. The streets will remain private. Township will not accept dedication and ownership of the streets. That also will be contained within the HOA documents. The board, we left the issue of parallel parking, whether or not that's going to be permitted, that will be a land development discussion, and obviously, your planning commission and your engineer will be involved in that conversation. The next one would be that the proposed development shall include off-street parking spaces perpendicular to and adjacent to the cartway for guests and visitors. The actual number of additional overflow parking, we did have a follow-up discussion, and Mr. Klein and NV's engineer were involved in agreeing upon a number, and that would be an additional for overflow parking of one space for every four dwelling units. The actual location about where all those overflow parking spaces will be located will be a detail that will be worked through during the land development stage. Configuration of the streets and the off-street parking must be approved by the Township Fire Marshal. Construction activities, including but not limiting to parking of vehicles and storage of equipment, cannot impede access to the development by township personnel and emergency service providers. There has to be a trail system accessible to the residents of the community. And the trail system and its ability to be used will be put in the HOA documents. Sidewalk and trail system designed, constructed, and maintained to provide connectivity to the nearby commercial and residential developments. Vehicular access points shall be from Bolinger Road and East Resfield Road, as generally depicted on the conceptual plan that was admitted at the hearing. Emergency access road and connections, there were two of them that were shown on the plan, one to Horseshoe Pike and then one to the Township driveway serving the Public Works Garage. 13 was one that we worked through with the applicant. They're going to provide a 50-foot-wide easement for use by township personnel and vehicles from the township property to East Resfield Road. The applicant will agree, as part of their land development, to obtain all necessary permits for that, for a proposed driveway or emergency access driveway, but they're not going to be responsible for the actual construction of that. If in the future the township elects to pave a cartway through that area, the township will pay for the cost of that and also maintain it. Sewer drip fields will be protected by temporary fencing. Applicant will grant necessary easements to the township or the municipal authority over the sewer drip fields and over any sewer facilities necessary. Development is served by public sewer, public water. They will offer to the four residential properties that front on Bolinger Road, a sewer main and cap service connection. They have an area marked Township Compost Area. I think it's approximately four acres. They're going to convey that to the township in fee simple at no cost. The sidewalk adjacent to Bolinger Road properties will be buffered by landscaping. The landscaping buffer will be continuously maintained by the homeowners association. They have to comply with comments from Pinoni in his last review letter. They will, we went through, the way Mr. Klein, I'm sorry, the way Mr. Heinrich wrote his letter was a lot of open-ended comments that weren't like real specific. And so the applicant didn't want to just say, I'll comply with all their comments, and I think that was a relevant point. So what we did in Condition 22 is we sat and went through every condition and statement made by Mr. Heinrich, and the applicant has agreed to how we've agreed to resolve those comments, and that's all set forth in Condition 22. Condition 23 is complying with John Black, who's the chairman of the Historical Commission. He had wrote a very lengthy email, and that was marked as an exhibit with respect to Historical Commission's comments. Complying with the Brandywine, East Brandywine Municipal Authority requirements, the DEP requirements regarding sanitary sewage, Chester County Planning Commission, that's really just consideration of their comments. And if there's, there are variances that they need, they identified those. They have to obtain those from the zoning hearing board. And the last two conditions are, again, compliance with representation and commitments made at the hearing and accepting these conditions.
The trails on Bolinger, the trail on Bolinger Road, the property, how close is that trail to the properties? Is that further down, or is that up close?
Mr. Winters, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I was saying, the, the trail system that is going to go towards Bolinger Road, those property owners, how close is that trail system to the back of the property? Because they, I think there's a little hill now. They were concerned about if it's going to be down the hill or up, or have plenty of buffering right there?
I think there was a commitment to do landscaping at the back of those properties so that they'd be buffered from any...
Yeah, that's Condition 19.
I just want to make sure that was, that was what that meant. I didn't know it was further down. Okay.
Yeah, that's Condition 19.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the proposed decision and order for the conditional use application of NVR Homes, Inc. for tax parcel number 30-5-3.6.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ordinance Task Force Updates. Scott?
At the planning commission meeting last night, the commission recommended that the Board of Supervisors authorize for submission of the Chester County Planning Commission for Act 247 Review and Ordinance Amending the Definition of School. Act 247 review and ordinance amending the definition of school and the permit of school as a conditional use in the M U district, and also amending the criteria applicable to conditional use applications. So I appreciate the board's approval of moving forward with submitting that to the county planning commission.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the submission of the proposed ordinance amending the definition of school and to permit a school as a conditional use in the M U Commercial District, and amending the criteria applicable to conditional use applications to the Chester County Planning Commission for Act 247 review.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And the second one is a recommendation for advertisement of the zoning ordinance amendment. It's also, well, I should say, it's an amendment to the definitions of consumer fireworks, and also zoning amendment for the sale of commercial fireworks in the Commercial Service Limited Industrial District.
Scott, regarding this, so I saw, I got an advertisement in the mail the other day, so apparently tents are no longer, you're not allowed to buy commercial fireworks and tents, and it has to be in a, it has to be in a brick-and-mortar store. So that's why we're doing this. But then also, or while you're asking to do this, also, is the gram amount changed, or is it still that?
Consumer fireworks is still regulated by the Pennsylvania State Police and the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture. So no, the grams have not changed.
Okay. Because the way that this advertisement read it was, you know, now the big stuff is legal in P A, but you must buy it in our store, and so on and so forth. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we advertise for adoption the zoning ordinance amendment regarding definition of consumer fireworks and sales in the C S slash L1 district.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just the point of that, we wouldn't have enough time to advertise that for your June 20th meeting. Is, is the board not meeting in work session for July? Is your next meeting then going to be the July 18th?
No, July 11th.
You're meeting on July 11th?
Yes.
That's an eight o'clock meeting?
Correct.
Okay, so does the board, is the board comfortable with doing it at that meeting? That ordinance?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
No ordinance and resolutions for consideration. Do I have any public comment on agenda items?
Hi. I just wanted to make a comment.
Ms. Dunn, could you, for the record, just state your name?
Yes, hi, Lindsay Dunn, attorney at Macvery Harvey. I was here this morning in my capacity as N V R Inc.'s attorney to receive the conditional use decision of the board, but to the extent that there was an earlier discussion with respect to Joe Burns Beverage and the Ulrichs, who I also represent, I just wanted to make it clear that my position is that I'm assisting, that I understand the township's concern with that intersection has to do with the development in the township. My capacity as the Ulrichs attorney has nothing to do with facilitating N V R's development. Notwithstanding PennDOT's, notwithstanding PennDOT's position that I think has been stated on in, in writing, that it's not going to issue H O Ps unless that intersection is dealt with, I respectfully disagree that PennDOT has the legal authority to withhold H O Ps. So my capacity as counsel for the Ulrichs is purely to assist that amicable discussion between them and the township, but it's completely divorced from, from my representation of N V R.
And I'm sorry if I made it seem like it wasn't.
Yeah.
I was just saying that the conversation came up because we were meeting on the N V R.
Right, right.
So that led to another conversation.
Right.
So I just wanted to.
Did not mean to imply that.
And just for my clarification, so, so your legal representation for the Ulrichs for, for this matter is already understood, and then you're, you're also representing, obviously, N V R.
Correct.
And I, I didn't know that until you just brought that up, so I'm glad it was brought up, but I guess that was also part of my, my concerns, that if counsel did want to, you know, facilitate on their own, I wanted to make sure that it was absolutely okay. You know how government works. It's, it's not a fast process, unfortunately, so that's why I wanted councils on Polte's side, on N V R's side, on, on anybody Maple Views, to have that option of facilitating on their own behalf.
Right.
Okay?
Yes, absolutely.
And I will say that the first thing, when I saw the PennDOT letter, was I asked what their authority was to say we can't issue H O permits, because things aren't going the way we would like them to go.
Right, right. Exactly, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other pub, any other public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, I don't believe we have any notices. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Do we? I guess you did put on the record our brief executive session in the middle, so.
There we go.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.